...kind of calling the orders, he drives the bus to the lane.
I read the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unadied, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is Casco's annual meeting. It's open to every resident, and if you're over eighteen, everyone here has the same rights as far as voting goes. I'll run the meeting up here because somebody has to do it. There's not a lot of things that they can do at this meeting. Years ago, when I was younger, they could do a lot at this meeting. Now the law says you really can't do much of anything, but you can still have it. And when you get at the end of the meeting, you can certainly voice your concerns, and yeah, we know the roads are terrible. If you want to be on Channel Six, then tell us that. We believe in your purview to do that. So, when we have a motion by someone that's supported, we'll call for a vote, and raise your hand if you vote yes, or you raise your hand and you vote no. And we have a hot resident over here to count, Mr. Jim Marker.
Yeah.
He's volunteered reluctantly, but he's volunteered. So, that being said, we're gonna start. And the first item is approval of the agenda.
Would I make a motion to approve the agenda submitted?
Moving on, to approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Twelve.
Those opposed, motion carries. The next item is approval of the minutes for last year, March thirteenth, two thousand eighteen.
Did everybody raise their hands? There's thirteen here.
Did you count yourself?
There's fourteen here. Count again. I count fourteen people, and we all raised our hands except you.
Yeah, I'm abstaining. One, two.
Well, then you have to state that, because we don't know.
You're abstaining?
It's about easier. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Yeah, you come up with it.
I have fourteen.
Yeah, fourteen. Put it down, it's passed.
Or just unanimous.
Oh, yeah, you can't, you can't count me, because I'm not from Casco.
No, no.
Okay. I was gonna say, I'm not from Casco, so.
No, we have, it would have been fourteen.
Fourteen.
It's fourteen.
Unanimous.
I gotta vote?
No, actually, he says abstaining, and you could vote.
You have to either vote yes, no, or abstain from voting.
So, you don't have to.
It'll pass.
I thought everybody voted yes, so I didn't ask if there was an abstention. Moving on, approval of the minutes for last year's meeting on March thirteenth, two thousand eighteen.
So, I'm old to accept support.
Moving supported to approve the minutes of last year. Is there any discussion? Everybody get a chance to look them over out there? All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Fourteen, I've counted.
There you go. Since there's only fourteen people, that's good enough. Okay, moving on. Item one, elected official salaries. Law says that every year, in January, if anybody, you have to establish salaries, even if they're the same, and then you can vote on it at the annual meeting. So, in January, we had these resolutions, and there's a copy of them in your packet. All the wages on here are identical to last year. There's no raises to anybody. But we need motions to approve of each resolution.
Okay, I make a motion to adopt Casco Township Resolution, two thousand nineteen dash zero two.
Any support?
Support.
Moving supported to adopt Resolution two oh nineteen oh two. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand.
I'd say fourteen.
There you go. Motion carries.
I didn't know there was gonna be so much response.
That's how they get you roped into it. That's how they rope into it.
I'm not coming next year.
Don't sit in that chair.
Channel Six, catch our esteemed counter, screw it up.
But not very well. Hi, Richmond.
We're friendly.
Moving on to item D, Resolution two oh nineteen oh three.
How many would we adopt Casco Township Resolution, two thousand nine, two thousand two, two thousand three?
Support.
Moving supported to adopt that resolution. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Fourteen.
There you go. Motion carries. On to item C, Resolution two thousand nineteen oh four.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution two thousand nineteen oh four.
I'll support it. Moving supported to adopt two thousand nineteen oh four. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Fourteen again.
Sounds good to me. You're lucky you're all unanimous.
Yeah, we don't wanna get in them I M A P situations.
Yep. Moving on to item D, Resolution two thousand nineteen oh five.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution two thousand nineteen oh five.
Yeah, I'll support that.
Moving supported to adopt Resolution two thousand nineteen oh five. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Fourteen.
Motion carries. Moving on, number two. Any questions or matters of concerns of residents? Now's your opportunity to speak. We would ask that you give us your name, but it's not required. Anybody out there? Yes?
Jake Garner, there's been great discussion about, and this may come up later, so tell me if it should be discussed later down the agenda, but the roads and spraying for frag mighties. There's been a great deal of discussion and a great hue and cry against it. Roundup is not the preferred method for most of us.
Well, I can tell you what I know. It's a county project, because frag mighties are a terrible weed that, not only do they block visibility, but they spread and you can't control them. So, they've been doing it for probably, you know, four or five years, and they go down the road and they only spray the frag mightie, nothing else. And usually, they put it in the newspaper of what's in there, and one of the products is Roundup, and there's another product. And they also tell you that if you do not want to be sprayed on your property, you can put signs up saying you do not spray. So, that's about all I know. It, they had a company out of Ohio the first year that did a terrible job, so they got rid of them. The company they've used ever since does a very good job, and they have very good results. So, that's about the only manner of control you can have. I can tell you my personal opinion, I think everything and all this stuff about Roundup is basically driven by lawyers that want a class action suit for billions of dollars. It's been used for forty years. You have to understand how Roundup works when you use it. It soaks into the plant, goes down, kills the plant. The rest of it goes in the soil and locks onto the molecules in the soil, and there it sits till it breaks down naturally. So, Roundup can't hurt anything if it doesn't soak in the plant. I've seen no evidence it's still legal. You can go up to the farm store, Menards, and buy it today. It's perfectly legal. I don't know if there's anything wrong with it. There's much stronger chemicals that are restricted that they could use, but they try and use, you know, the safest product they can. They are planning, probably not this year, but in future years, to try and spray the back of the ditch to keep the brush under control, but they won't use Roundup, because Roundup will kill your lawn if it hits it. They will use two-four D derivatives that don't kill grass. I don't believe that's planned for this year, maybe starting next year, because the back of the ditches get overgrown with brush, and then eventually, it keeps crowding the ditch, crowding the ditch. It costs a lot of money to clean the ditch. So, they're planning on that. Now, they plan on going around and mowing the backside of the ditch this year. About three or four years ago, we paid about fifty percent extra, because we paid to mow the bottom of the ditch. So, we paid about fifty percent extra to mow the backside, but we couldn't mow anything bigger than about that big. Well, they bought something now that they can basically cut whatever they want, and they plan on doing that over a two-year program in the county to clean up the backside of the ditch.
Now, is that only the county roads, or will that be all their township roads?
Well, all the roads. Yep. See, every road here is a county road, only most of them, the township pays the bill. Township does not own a road, the Casco Township. But we paid for them, because if we didn't pay for them, they wouldn't do them. Church Road and Meiser, our gravel, not for long, our gravel roads that are county roads. The only paved road that we maintain is Sinclair Highway. All the other paved roads are county roads, and then we maintain all the other gravel roads.
Now, last year, they dredged our ditch on Putty Gut, on Between Palms and Mayor, and they came and literally dug out our ditch.
Well, that's another, that's another whole.
Thank you, Jesus, because we, you know, needed the brush hog to get in there, and that was amazing.
Right.
We will never get frag mighties again. So, how did that?
Okay, that is the potting gut, county drain. That falls under the purview of the county drain commissioner, which has nothing to do with the road commission.
Nothing at all, okay.
Now, they did it under a maintenance project, and when you do a maintenance project, you can't touch the culverts. So, even though they did a pretty good job, it wasn't a great job, because they left all the culverts there.
We had ours replaced.
Well, you paid for it.
We did.
Yeah.
Yes, we did.
But normally, when they do, when they did the Melvin drain, which cost eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, by the way, they replaced all the culverts, but the people and property owners, they paid that. Okay? But we did. It cost, it cost Casco Township a hundred and thirty thousand dollars out of our fund equity for our share of the Melvin drain. It was very expensive.
It, it does flow a lot better. I will say that my ditches do drain a lot faster. Yours probably drains, well, yours is always cleaned up.
They better.
Yours doesn't count.
No, ours doesn't count. We take care of our own thing.
Hers is not a county drain.
Right, but hers is, hers is like a county drain.
Well, it should have been. It came that far from being one at one time, but it fell through, so it's not a county drain. But county drain and, and the road commission are not boos and buddies. They both think the other one should have the trouble. So, the one that potting gut, which is a putty gut that goes into China, that's a county drain. They also cleaned some on Palms Road, that was a county drain. They cleaned the Jerome drain on Church Road, that was a county drain. We paid for the ditching down here on Melvin last year. That township paid for that. And that was over two years, and we had about eighty thousand into that, but we had to replace the culverts, which made it costly, which can't mandate the property owner to do that.
Then how did we have to pay for hers?
I know, but there's no way.
How did it work? I mean, I own the property, it's fine with me. It isn't a hugely expensive project as projects go.
But that's the way the system is.
Now, is it possible to dredge more ditches rather than spray them?
Well, there's a ton of them, but it's very, very expensive.
I mean, the worst of them, where the worst of the frag mighties are, when it makes more sense to do them out and then continue to maintain them?
The way I prioritize is, if water comes over the road, that's number one priority. We have one place in the township, unfortunately, it's on a county road, and I have no jurisdiction. And I've been relentless bugging the road commission to clean that ditch. It's supposed to start this year. I have to see it to believe it. So, then you have to look at what ditch, if it's not going over the road, affects the most amount of people negatively, you know? And you get a priority list, because you go down any road and say, you know, oh, that ditch is bad. Well, yeah, it is bad, because a lot of them haven't been cleaned since the thirties and the forties. But how many people is it impacting? If you look at any road, any road, one side of the road usually has a large ditch, and the other one has a small ditch, and that's because of the natural flow of the water, whichever way it comes from, that'll be decided with the big ditch. The other side of the road, even though there's a ditch there, the water runs away through the road. Okay, so you have to take that into account. So, sometimes it floods on the side with a small ditch, and everybody's all excited, but that's the natural flow of the water wants to go in the opposite direction. So, those are the things we look at. Clean a half a mile ditch, let's say, three culverts in it, you're looking at thirty-five thousand dollars from the township's fund equity. So, it adds up very fast.
Gets out replacing the culverts, is that?
Yeah, but only three.
What about not replacing the culverts, just scrape?
Well, you're doing a poor job then, because all the old culverts are buried in the bottom of the ditch.
And they're full, and they're about half full of dirt and grass.
And a lot of them are undersized, you know? You see twelve-inch culverts all over. They do not allow a twelve-inch culvert anymore. Eighteen's the smallest group of possible use, and that's why. So, if you want a good job, you have to go right down to where you want to end up. So, that's kind of how we prioritize. Every spring, some years are different, we have crossroad tubes, and they cost about, average, about thirty-five hundred dollars for one. We currently have a hundred and ten of them with the township.
What did you call her?
Crossroad tube, goes amongst that road, the other.
Yeah, they put one in at the edge of our property, yeah.
Yeah, not at the corner, though, in, in miles. But there could be one in the corners.
There's one by our house.
We have a hundred and ten of them.
Makes a big difference.
So, some springs we get maybe one, some springs we get five. If you have a bad year, you might get more than that. So, and that's the number one priority. You have to open that up. So, there's always priorities, and, you know, I'd love to clean every ditch in the township, but man, we don't have money for that. We get one mil for the roads, and that generates about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. We average about a hundred and seventy-five, a hundred and eighty thousand out of our pocket, so we're spending way over the village. Now, if you go to another township, our next door neighbor, they get one mil, they get four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, if I had four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I could do some serious ditching, but I do not have that money. I'm limited to the one forty. So, by the time we do the limestone, before I mow the ditches, do the crossroad tubes, we always have one project. Now, our project this year is everybody that came over Melvin Road said, oh, there's a giant hole by the overpass. We're gonna pour a hundred feet more blacktop on both sides of that overpass. And the reason we're doing that is Church Road has the same setup, and theirs holds up pretty good. So, the only difference I can see in the two is that one on Church Road is a hundred feet longer. When you go down here, it comes downhill with water, and as soon as it gets to the bottom, it's on gravel. So, we're gonna add a hundred feet on both sides for that. And then we're gonna go in three corners and extend the apron twenty-five feet, and that is Springborne Palms, Melvin twenty-six, and Lindsay County Line. And the one at Melvin's just a lot of traffic at twenty-six. The other two, what it is, is the water is running towards the paved road, and it comes off the paved road, and it meets at the end of the apron. We're hoping by adding twenty-five feet, we can slope it to the ditch better and keep, so we don't get the giant holes. So, that was our project for this year. Those five proj, those things I mentioned, the two extensions and the three aprons, they estimate a fifty-five thousand dollars. It's very expensive. So, that's how we arrive at our priorities. There's a thousand things I'd like to do, I came forward to do it.
I just know having our ditch dredged, now we can keep it clean. It's much easier once they dug all that stuff out, because it was so full of the cat tails, we didn't really have too many frag mighties, but just having it gone.
But see, a normal ditch, the road commission will not dredge the bottom. If they touch that ditch, they have to bring it up to cold, and that's cleaning it. So, they can't go through, that's what I say, go, go, take eight inches out of the bottom. They will not do that. Liability. They have to have a slope on each bank. One side's two to one, one's three to one, for safety, so a car drives it. So, that's why they won't go through, just dredge out the bottom. So, even though it's nice to do some things, they won't do it, and there's a reason behind it.
Yeah, it really helps if, I mean, clean their ditches, that is a huge part of, you know, keeping them passable.
Now, a couple of years ago, there was a place, and it was in a neighboring township where the guy would not let him mow, and he had frag mighties. And then the kid came on the driveway, got hit by a car and died. So, they had Jeffrey Figer through the road commission. Well, when it was all said and done, Jeffrey Figer got six hundred dollars, because it was their fault. They wouldn't let him mow, he was out on weeds, and it was right near an intersection and everything. So, besides spreading the frag mighties, and if you ever go in Lake St. Clair, you can see there's islands out there, you cannot tell there's an island there because of the frag mighties.
Yeah, it's got Terry Marsden Island, and they're.
I do.
They're terrible, you know? And so, it's a safety thing, too. That's why we always pay to mow more in the ditch, so when people back out of the driveway, they can see if somebody's coming. So, that's where we stand on that.
Yeah, occasionally, those crossroad tubes, they fail, we don't know they're failing till they fail, and you call up and say, the Golden Road, and, occasionally, that happens. There's lots of tubes, crossroad tubes. How many do we have in the township?
Hundred and ten.
Hundred and ten, okay.
Yeah, you put one in front of my house, kind of, just to the west, on the western of our property, on a cross.
Well, you know, if you think that, you know, that there's a tube right there, and it's, you might be caving in, call the road commission, they'll check it out.
Oh, definitely, definitely. It's made a big difference, I mean, just having the dredging that they did, I mean, everything flows so much.
Oh, that was bad, although they were pretty good.
Yes.
That one guy had a lake in his front yard. I really felt bad.
That's my neighbor, yeah, two doors over.
Because we cleaned, we paid to clean that little bit of ditch across the road.
Right.
Now, there, I said, I'll clean it if you guys buy your culverts, or I'm not cleaning, because it was just that one stretch. So, they did, all the neighbors, the three neighbors, bought their own culverts, and then we cleaned it. And, but that was terrible on the north side of the road there. I agree.
Yeah, other than Wayne County, St. Clair County has the most bridges in the state.
Yeah, I love it. I just wanted to understand.
Right, that's nice.
And I appreciate the information very much.
Anybody else have anything? Comments, questions?
I've got a question. The culvert on Hessen Road, right on the corner, the new one, you guys just put it in two years ago. When they dug that, the creek, the drain, that one culvert is full. It's like only that much space now, and now, like, half my yard floods, because the water don't flow through. How do we get that cleaned out?
Did they replace the culvert?
Yeah, but, but they did it a couple of years ago, remember, right?
Well, we did the one under the road.
Yeah.
We put a new one in.
There's two of them there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that one's like full, there's only like that much space.
So, it's the one on Springborne?
Hessen.
The one on Hessen, because it cuts the corner by your house, right?
Yeah, yep, right on the.
Because we replaced the one on Hessen.
Right.
If it's in the county drain, call the drain commission.
Okay, all right, yeah.
And tell them you think there's some kind of blockage in there.
Okay, all right.
Because you can get blockage, and that's the one negative about mowing brush. That was my concern, if they mow all the brush.
Leave it in the ditch. It's full of dirt, it's gotta go down there somewhere.
It's gonna block something.
Yep.
And they said, well, you know, it'll break down. Well, yeah, you know, thirty years, but what are you gonna do? Yeah, call them.
All right.
They'll come up and look at it, in the county drain, especially if it's on the road.
Okay.
As we replaced two of them on Hessen.
Yep.
One, we put a new culvert in, and that cost about seventy thousand.
Right.
And the other one, we got several money to put it on a bridge.
Right, yeah, the culvert one, that's the one that's full.
Yep. Okay, well, there's something causing it.
When they, when they dug the drain, that's when it filled up.
I don't know, let them check it out.
All right.
So, that's why they get the big block. Okay, anybody else? Hearing none, we'll move on to number three, which is adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Who has supported to adjourn? All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
I'm fourteen.
Good, ma'am, thank you. Okay. Going down, we're moving on to the next packet, which is our regular monthly meeting. We already did the pledge of the flag, so we're gonna dive right in. First item is approval of the agenda.
How much can we approve the agenda as submitted?
I'll support that.
Moving supported. You guys don't get to vote anymore, it's started.
You don't get to count. You're all, you're all done. Relax.
Moving supported to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Next item is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February twelfth.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February twelfth.
I'll support that.
Moving supported to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item is a financial report.
We began the month with three hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and four dollars and fifty-six cents, took in receipts of ninety-eight thousand, seventy dollars and thirty-nine cents, and made disbursements in the amount of forty-eight thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and fifty cents, leaving us with an ending balance in the general fund of three hundred and ninety-two dollars, three sixty-three, twenty forty-five.
May I make a motion to accept the financial report as submitted?
Support.
Moving supported to accept the financial report as submitted. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Moving on, item eight. A gentleman came in from Burn Flowers, who's a very large insurance company, and they do carry power plan, which is insurance policies for municipalities put out by MTA, basically. We had them years ago. I explained to them that several years ago, we had a full-blown bidding process, and our current carrier, Nickel Saff, gave us the best price, and ever since then, their cost, their increase year to year has been basically cost a living, two to three percent. So, I really wasn't too excited about it right now. The clerks had a meeting, and a couple gentlemen came up that bought the insurance agency we used to have with power plan. So, unless you guys want to do differently, I think I'll let it go for this year, and next year, we can, if we want to explore, at least they're local, because this guy's in Kalamazoo. The firm we have is local, and they give excellent service. Whatever we ask for, we have it right now. So, I have no complaints with them whatsoever, so unless the board sees differently, we'll just leave as is.
I agree.
Okay, moving on. Road commission, how timely can you get? A few weeks ago, we had our annual meeting with the road commission, where they tell you what's new and what's changing. They're gonna give us about, I don't know, three thousand dollars more money this year, which is better than none. Our yearly fee for matching money is roughly, was thirty-seven, now it's thirty-nine. The burn money, we've been kind of hoarding that over a little bit, so we had fifteen in the bank, we're getting five more, so we're up to twenty-one. We have to spend five thousand of it this year, or we lose it. That's usually where I get the money to put in crossroad tubes. The price of limestone, this is the last year of their contract, is the same as it has been, which is sixteen dollars and sixty-five cents a ton. Chloride, on the other hand, has gone up about ten cents. Chloride, on the other hand, has gone up about ten cents, to eighteen point four cents per gallon. So it's gonna cost us a little more for chloride. In the past few years, which is really kind of crazy, they made you take a three-year balance of how much limestone you put on, and if you did that, then they would give you a four to one match and put more limestone. So this year, they're doing the four to one match, up to twenty-five thousand, but they're not, they're not making you do the three-year average. So that's very beneficial. So we're hoping that'll work out well. What am I missing? Joe, Dan, Joe and Dan were at the meeting.
You gave me a little piece about the Church Road ditching situation.
I'm on all the time about that. They gave us a list here of all their upcoming projects in nineteen, in the whole county. If anybody would like it, you're certainly welcome to it, I can always make another copy. So they're busy, and I will say that, you know, the road commission is usually pretty helpful to us. Especially if it doesn't cost too many money. We go on Palms Road, you know, every, every crossroad has a sign, honey got road coming up. Well, every road except Lindsey doesn't have, Lindsey doesn't have any signs, somebody got them or they, whatever. So I said, "Well, who put the signs up?" "Well, it was county." I said, "Well, you need to replace them." "Well, yeah, but I'm gonna charge you a hundred and seventy-five dollars each," so I haven't done it yet, because I'm still trying to get them to do it under quasi-warranty stuff.
Do they get mad if we put up our own signs on their road?
If it's in the right way, they don't want you to put anything up.
Then we start putting up lazy signs.
So.
Tell them, "Well, then, if you want your sign."
Because we do have the streetlights, it makes it pretty easy to find the intersections. And we might get those signs up yet, I'll bug them again this year, maybe that gives it a good move. But I really want to clean Church Road where the water comes over the road. So they tell me they're gonna start, they're gonna engineer it. And the reason they engineer it is because of all the utilities mostly. There's so many telephone cables, and gas lines, and unit, this and that and the other thing, makes it very hard to dig, unless they engineer it. So supposedly gonna do that this spring. And the area foreman, who covers six townships and we're one of them, he's a busy young man. And he said he's gonna try and utilize some of his funds, and get started anyway. So, but there's a lot of culverts and animals. We're always working on something with them. And our foreman does an excellent job, he helps us. Anytime we need anything, he's right there to help us. So we're very fortunate, respect. Any questions on the road meeting? Okay, moving on, item C, EMS invitation. As I do every year, we get an invitation to the Richmond-on-Autumn EMS Employee Recognition Dinner. It's gonna be held April sixth at Montiachi's Vanquish Center in Richmond. And they have the R S D P number there and who to ask for. So feel like going to the ceremony, please do. Old business, item A, park update. We finally, I don't know, yesterday or the day before, we finally got the last document we've been waiting for, to submit to the state to get reimbursed for the parking. We bought our, we have to buy a plaque to the DNR, then you have to take a picture of the plaque, well, she's got the colors with. So we took the plaque out, took a picture, then I brought the plaque back, because somebody's gonna steal it, all we did was stick it on a four-by-four, because there's no post there. So once we get something more permanent, we'll do a better job of getting that up there. So that plaque costs two hundred and ten dollars, so I'm not leaving it there, till we have something permanent. So we're hoping that we can get everything to the county and get our money back. Approximately, we're gonna get like a hundred and forty-eight thousand for the DNR, and twenty-six thousand from St. Clair County Park and Recs. So further on in the meeting, if you noticed on the agenda, we're hiring a consultant to teach us how to develop a park, that's best for us, most cost-effective and lightest stuff. Because none of us are experts, and especially if you decide to get frisky and get a grant, you need somebody that really knows your business. So that's where we stand on the park.
You know, we have a picture of the plaque on the property, that is not a township dog, that's a dog of, of Chris Bunch of the Six River Conservatives. No, their dog is not a Casco dog.
He's not gonna show up in case of pay loss. Yeah, then we can do a net of, yeah.
Does anybody know where the property is, the park property?
Behind the BP.
Yeah, next door and behind. So.
It was really fortunate to get that property, it was a really unexpected opportunity and.
A lot of paperwork, when you deal with a state, after we go, after we were awarded the grant, they sent us a document to just proceed to get the money, it's eighty-five pages long. You know, and this is what you got to do to get the money after they already gave you the grant. It's a massive bureaucracy, and they work with you, they're pretty friendly, but the stuff you gotta do, it's unbelievable. Number one, you have to give them the mineral rights.
Oh, yes, God forbid.
Oh, yeah, and it might be some oil under there. So you have to give them the mineral rights. And what makes it good over there, it's kind of, you know, it's on a main road. There's no homes right tied up against it, so if there's noise or problems, it's not affecting residences. There's a lot of county sheriffs and states that drive through there. Other than that, we'll probably be putting in a better driveway pretty quick. But after that, it all depends on this lady, if we hire her, to come up with a plan. You're more than welcome, if you watch our, through the website or Facebook, when there's a park committee, you're more than welcome to come and listen. In our master plan, they kind of said, you know, we want to have, basically, sometime down the road, might be in a long time, we'd like it open for kayaks. But first, there's a million trees to get out of the river. Well, we do want walking trails, flat trails hopefully, and ones that go down to the river. Some type of a pavilion, where you've got barbecues. I would like to have something down by the river, in the way of, if you wanted to go fishing. Those are the things we're kind of looking at, because it's only twenty-eight years, you're not getting Metro Park, you're twenty-eight years, and I know that. So we're just at the beginning stage, but we'd certainly like input from anybody that is interested. Because you may have a good idea, because we don't know anything about developing a park. So that'll be coming up this year. Okay. Moving on, new business. Item A, public hearing. Budget for two thousand nineteen and twenty, the law says every year, we have to vote a public hearing and approve the budget for this coming year. So here we go. At this time, we're gonna open the public hearing. Excuse me, you had the time, Bertha?
Seven forty.
We're gonna open the public hearing. I don't know if you guys had enough chance to look at anything, there's a copy of the budget in here. It's very close to what it was last year. I'll give you a minute, if you want to look at it. What'd you do to your buddy, they're only sick, wait.
He must have been around with people that were sicker than him.
Well, I'm gonna kind of start in, but we'll certainly give anybody an opportunity for questions or comments. The one page here gives you our millage rates for this year. We have this constitutional millage, which originally was one percent, but after many years, Hedley keeps nipping at it, so we're down to point seven-seven-one-seven. That's our one millage. Then we have a voted road millage, was for one mil, Hedley nipped us, so we're at nine-nine-four-nine. Those are our two millages. The total amount of real estate in private, personal property in the township, for taxes is a hundred and fifty-nine million, one hundred and forty-five thousand, ninety-five dollars. So. A hundred and fifty-nine million. So a hundred and fifty-nine million tax that, point seven-seven-one-seven, generates a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Okay, does anybody have any questions on anything in the budget? That would be a good opportunity to ask us, we'll see if we can answer it for you. We basically have three budgets, we have the general fund budget, we have the Park and Recs budget, because Park and Recs money is, can never be intertwined with the general fund. And then we have an old thing that we still do, is the liquor control. And what that is, anybody in Casco that has a liquor license pays the state X amount of dollars, depending on which license you have. And it can range from fifty to fifteen hundred dollars. The township goes out every month and inspects their license, that it's in place, up to date, and all this good stuff. And the state gives us some money. So they give us about four thousand dollars a year, and it can only be spent for liquor inspections. Our constable does that every month, he's very conscientious. But that money cannot be used for anything but liquor inspections. Now, we currently have eleven. And the reason we have so many is because all the beer and wine. And they actually cost us money, because it costs us more to go there than they get from the state. Where they make the money is on the bars. That's where the biggest cost is. I think Old Hop pays like fifteen hundred a year for theirs. So years ago, there was only a couple of bars, so we had all kinds of money in that fund. But now, we're actually, we run them into red a little bit, because of all the beer and wine stops. But we have like seven or eight thousand in the bank, so I'm trying to get that lowered a little bit, because someday the state's gonna come in and say, "Well, we want that money back." So we still pay the gentleman less than we used to, but we still pay him X amount of dollars to go out and inspect these eleven places every month. But that money cannot be touched by any other fund, it has to be kept by itself. So those are the three basic budgets we have.
And as we're going down the, the list, this is just a working budget, it gets amended throughout the year. Right. So I will tell you right now, it's later on the agenda, but I will be asking for a rise in the assessor's salary, to be included in the new fiscal year, to be starting immediately. We'll talk about that later, but I just want you to know that, that will be something I will be asking for.
Does everybody have enough time to kind of look it over? A lot more time, speak up now, or we're gonna close the public hearing. Sounds pretty quiet, so we need a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close.
Okay. No, go ahead, Patty, I'll support it.
Okay, can I make a motion to close our public hearing?
I support that.
Close it, support it, to close the public hearing.
Seven forty-five, we didn't have a motion to open it, we just opened it.
I just opened it. So we need a motion to close.
Okay.
Okay, it's moved and supported to close the public hearing, any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Foes, sustaining, motion carries. Okay, moving on. The next item is approval of the budget. In your packet was a copy of the recommended budget. We need a motion to approve this.
Can I make a motion to approve our two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget?
I'll support that.
Move and support it, to approve the recommended budget for two thousand nineteen, twenty, is there any discussion?
And I just noted that I'm going to be asking for an increase in contracted assessing services.
Well, but that won't affect this.
That's fine, just as long as you know, don't want to spring anything on you.
Okay. Any other discussion? And now we're, we'll call a vote, please.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Dan, yes. Bill.
Aye.
And Colleen.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item C, network computer service contract. Every year, we've, for several years, we've been using network computers for our computer service. They've been doing, I gotta say, they've been doing a pretty good job. When you call them, they get out here pretty quick, and they always get everything working. The amount is the same as it's been since the beginning, which is three thousand dollars a year. We need a motion to approve it, I would recommend we approve it.
I make a motion to approve network computers' contract for three thousand dollars.
Support.
Move and support it.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Do we do any concerted efforts to evaluate the security of the computer system? There was an article in the Township Magazine.
Yes, I saw that.
I thought it was a good article, but it raised a lot of questions.
You know, the guy that normally comes out from network, I've asked him a few times, but I'm so uninformed in that area that if he told me it was great, I'd believe him, if he told me it was terrible. We do have some protection, but whether it's adequate, I can't tell you. I can certainly.
You have a Comcast system?
Yeah.
So you have Norton, at least.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
We've got the Thunder.
Right, we have Norton, we have one of those.
One does well.
Not Norton, Brendan's, Brendan's.
I would suggest that you look a little further, because I think the complications of a breach could be really difficult to handle.
Understand.
Okay, I will.
Just ask, I, I think they probably know enough to give you.
A D G would be the one he would put on a, A D G.
We had A D G.
Right. Because he works more, more with A D G. You know about A D G?
No.
Okay, which we have, had in the past. But we can talk to him about that, okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Well, we could ask him just to give us an outline of what's.
Yeah, and what, what, what our options are in terms of backup recoveries, threats to, you know, to malware, picking information, ransomware, all those kinds of things that are really out there now. And serious, churches have suffered considerably from those kinds of things, not just churches. Hosts there.
So you're gonna do that, thank you?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to support to approve the service contract with network. Any discussion? Have a roll call vote, please.
Okay, Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Pat, yes? Joe? Joe?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on, item D, budget adjustments. We tried to do this last month, unfortunately, several things came up. By the end of the year, we have to balance that budget. We can't have any line items that we spent more than we had. So in the last month, we had more inspections by our inspectors than we anticipated. And the other one was for Giffords Webster for working on our zoning permits. You wanna go over this, please, Patty?
You just did.
I didn't give amounts or anything.
All right, Dan, we had to increase our building inspector, another 2,000 dollars, brought it up to 18,000 dollars. Electrical inspector, we had to bring him up another 800 dollars, and our planner, 2,500 dollars. Total amount of 5,300 dollars, and we took that out of our contingency account, which left a left of, an ending balance of 14,700 dollars in our contingency account. Any question?
Your motion.
If there are none, then I make a motion that we approve these amendments.
Yeah, I support that.
Moved and supported. To approve the budget amendments outlined previously. Is there any discussion? It's always a guess with the inspections, because the more permits you give, the more inspections you have to do. Well, yeah, they pay for the permits, so if you look on the other part of the budget, under revenue, there's revenue there. But on the expenditure side, because they have to make more inspections, that goes up higher than what we budgeted, because you never know how many inspections you do. That's why we're adjusting it, so our fiscal year ends at the end of March. So we're just turning every, all the ducks in a row before the first debate. Okay, it's moved and supported. Any discussion? Have a roll call vote, please.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Pat, yes. Bill?
Aye.
And Colin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on, fire contract. Met with the Richmond Township, Columbus Township, and the City of Richmond, because our mutual fire contract is running out later this year. I kinda outlined in the update a little bit. They wanna just pretty much continue the language. They would like to also continue a longer term, and we're probably gonna have to throw a little more money in for vehicles, because they totaled out their ladder truck last summer, whatever, and...
Boy, that's embarrassing.
Well...
Probably the same thing Clay Township did, rode too fast, rolled them over, no big deal.
Story I got was on the vision. There was a garbage truck going down the road, tree fell in front of the garbage truck. Garbage truck stopped, and they were working on a fire road, and they were just driving down the road, and a fire truck followed, and they totaled the truck. But we don't, you know...
Really?
A used fire truck.
And they say women have problems driving?
It's, you know, a used fire truck.
Why are you looking at me? I didn't say anything.
You're just in a truck, I should've looked at her.
Female firefighter.
It could've been.
Yeah, that would've been...
That's why I stick with Joe, she says, that's why I stick with Joe. Yeah, but that truck's probably 25, 30 years old.
Oh, okay.
Truck's just hyper expensive.
Well, yeah.
And this was a ladder truck, it wasn't a pumper.
Oh.
But if you get a 10-year-old pumper, it probably costs you 450,000, you know, and we don't kick in that much money.
Well, I thought, well, I guess I don't know fire equipment, so I don't know insurance.
Yeah, nobody, nobody, there are a few that buy units.
They got that truck that was that 67,000 seater, all grass one.
Yeah.
I know people wanting to buy that.
The last new one I know that got purchased was New Baltimore purchased that ladder truck, and that was, God, that's probably been 15 years ago.
I don't know if any of Ira's went in the bar or not, it might've been.
Or red.
They're red.
Yeah, well, New Baltimore usually always goes with green.
Oh, that's right.
And they bought a red truck, so there was a big uproar about that, and it was expensive.
Oh, I see used ones for 150, 500,000.
Yeah, in the township magazine we get through Michigan Township Association, you'll see all the time that different, you know, townships are selling fire trucks, they use kind of vehicles like that.
So we're negotiating a little bit, I still have a little problem with the false alarm language, but nobody else got excited. They're talking four or five years, I would probably be more inclined with four than five, even though we did put protection in last time about if things go awry, you could reopen the contract. I don't see where it hurts us to go four versus five.
What was our last one?
Last one was actually, it covered four years, but it was a year late. They just didn't do anything, so we kinda quit paying them, and then they got going.
Okay.
So it covered four years, but it was really a three-year contract. We get along good, we're on the same page. The count is pretty similar every year. We had 63, that's fire and medical, 63 runs in Casco last year for Richmond. So, and we pay roughly 48,000. So, you know, it's like 8900 dollars every time a truck leaves the shop. Now, we've been able to afford it, so we don't charge that. We only charge 250 for a fire run, 50 for a medical. Our neighboring townships, they're 900 dollars for a medical. Family member lives by the pier, they're 2,500 dollars for a medical.
I have a hard time getting 250 and 50 dollars out of them.
So, somebody has to pay for it. Well, because we have the road millage, we can afford to cover that a little bit. If we didn't have the road millage, we'd be 900 dollars too.
I'm not gonna get any more.
You wouldn't, because everybody's homeowners would go, with no fire service.
Yeah, but you go to collections, and they go after their credit rating, you get leverage. Plus, if it's a legitimate fire, your insurance company will pay most of them up at 1,200. Well, my sister, who has the one by the pier, she had to actually put a rider on her homeowners for that 2,500.
I don't wanna have to do that.
So, that's what happens when you get, but it costs too much money, you can't afford it. So, anyway, if no one has a problem, I'm supposed to meet with them again in about 10 days.
Bill, I have a quick question.
Yep.
Richmond Township, are they covered a large part by Memphis Fire Department?
Memphis, and I think they get some Armada too.
Okay, so that's why their numbers are quite lower.
Yeah, plus, they don't, they don't have as many people as us either, I believe. So, we're pretty close to Columbus.
See, Richmond Fire Department, they cover all of I-94 through the township.
Yeah.
And Meisner Road North, except the half of one section, that's either Township Fire Department, so...
Ira does a good job too, our contract's up with them, I did talk to their supervisor, I gotta get over there and talk to them. Hopefully that'll go good. So...
But when you go to talk to them again, I have a really hard time charging people when they go for a well-being check. I don't think we should charge for that.
Okay.
And tell them, you know, you're...
Normally the...
That's usually the sheriffs or somebody.
Yeah.
Party departments not set to roll up on them.
The fire department went.
Yeah, 'cause that's an unsecured scene, they shouldn't be going up. If there's something happening there, the law enforcement cops should be there first. That's usually how it always goes.
They went, and...
How many of those?
I got, this is the first one I got, and it came back, they said I had the wrong address, so usually when they run like that, I send it to collections, but I didn't. I just...
Yeah, that's a stretch a little, we'd have to give more details.
Yeah, I just don't, if it was really a person that was in need of help, and they went on a checkup or to see how they were doing, I just don't feel like...
The only, the only way I'd see that happening is if they called the party department directly.
Well...
Because if they call 911, 911 will dispatch the county or the state police.
I'll have to look at it again, but somebody, one of the fire departments called them to go check on this person. I don't know if it was EMS or what, but it was a well-being check.
Well, okay.
So, but ask them.
I should have a copy of that, 'cause I got a copy of, was that just the 19 or 18?
18, I just got, yeah, I'll give it to you.
Okay, 'cause I got a copy of all of them, 18, I wanted to go...
I think that's an eyebrow on mine, I'm not sure.
Go over it, but I didn't get a chance yet.
I'll give it to you.
Okay. So anyway, I'm gonna meet with them again and see what's cooking.
You meet with them right at the fire hall there?
We met at the city offices last time, I'm gonna have to check, I think we met at the fire hall this morning.
You know, I've never been in that place. Years in the military, and I've never been a Richmond firefighter.
Okay.
They just had an open house, didn't they there?
Yeah.
With Girl Scouts selling cookies.
Yeah.
Yeah, I missed out, isn't that strange?
Okay. Moving on, item F, professional service bid for park. We requested and receives a bid to develop a master plan for the park from Ms. Pamela Blau. We vetted her pretty good, and she gets the highest of ratings. She's worked for the City of Richmond, for the county, she's currently doing work for the city of Port Yorn, and she's very knowledgeable, a very nice person. I checked with the Conservancy, I checked with the county of Park and Recs, they all said the price was reasonable. Her price for this service is 8,800 dollars, and... I guess I would recommend that we approve that, if we need somebody that's gonna run this thing.
Okay, I make a motion, we hire PBMB Blau Incorporated for the park master plan at a cost of 8,800 dollars.
Moved and supported. We hire PMB for 8,800 dollars to go master plan for the park. Is there any discussion? Have a roll call vote, please.
Colin?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Pat, yes. Joe?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item is surveyor bids for the park property. When our Park and Recs Committee met, Ms. Blau was there, and rightfully so, she said that, you know, to develop the park, you're gonna need a topographical map that shows all the elevations. And so we went out, got a couple bids. We got one from Project Control for 12,600 dollars, and we got one from BMJ Engineers for 9,400 dollars. They're both reputable companies, we appreciate them bidding on it. Because of all the brush on the site, it makes it much more expensive, because they have to go on-site, a lot of them, they can do a lot of it from the air. So, we need a topographical survey, and recommendation is BMJ.
How much is that for?
9,400 dollars.
I make a motion, we hire BMJ Engineers and Surveyors to make the topographical survey of the Casco Township Park property for a cost of 9,400 dollars.
Support.
Moved and supported. We'll approve the bid from BMJ for the survey.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The consultant who recommended a 5,000 dollar analysis instead, I agree.
Saying that was BMJ.
Yes.
But, I thought about it, and I thought, this is goofy.
Just do it all at once.
Well, so I called them, and I said, you know, one thing I know we're gonna have is a walking trail. And that, I'm assuming, and I don't know, but part of the trail will be up on the high ground, and they'll probably have a trail going down by the river. So you're pretty much covering the entire site, so what good does a partial topographical do? You know, and I said, you might as well get it over with, 'cause otherwise, what, you're gonna come back and want 9,000 to finish it, you know? And I talked to, everybody I talked to said that made logical sense. So then we changed the bid, that's why I inked out the 5,000, because he was just gonna use a light-or method, which I don't have any confidence in when I'm not an engineer, and go with a real topographical, we doubled it.
The other thing, is there, is there another document with all kinds of fine print attached to this, that was the other proposal we got?
I don't believe so.
And I have some serious concerns about it.
Okay.
You know, there's arbitration agreement, and mediation, and liability issues.
I don't think he sent anything with the 5,000, I think it was part of Ms. Blau's.
This was actually in the other proposal for...
From Project Control.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Monty does a good job, but he's a little more money. Well, if you think there's a big enough problem with BMJ's language, you can...
I don't have it, I don't believe, except from the letter. There may be something else, I don't really know.
Well, then, we just got this like last Thursday.
Well, this is on, my concerns were that there were liability limitations, and that there was an agreement to mediate or arbitrate instead of whatever. And if something really goes wrong with the survey, and it's a stamped document, and we have a lawsuit from whatever, from somebody nearby, I think that we should at least keep that in mind to have enough, have no limitations.
Okay.
Or have at least reasonable limitations, but not 25,000.
I can call Mr. Arnold tomorrow, if I can get a hold of him.
He may not even ask for anything like that, and he may not have anything more than this, and this might be it, but I suspect there'll be more.
We'll see if he has some more of a formal type of contract to go with it. You can make, you can put in a motion that, you know, have to meet your concerns.
I don't need to do that. Just, as long as they're on the table, I can take care of that, I'm not, I don't think it needs to be...
Commercial and industrial people, many times you get a topographical. And they're pretty cut and dry, you're paying for the seal, basically, and, but, no, 'cause I, 'cause like I say, we just got this, and it's not crystal clear even on Ms. Blau's on the, you know, on the payment schedule. So, we're gonna have to play that by ear a little bit.
No, no upfront payments?
Aye.
No upfront payments?
We're moving not within a week of contract execution, so it appears as though you're gonna get a contract aside.
Yeah. They'll send us the contract.
Looks like we'll get a contract based on that here.
You know, Bill, you may wanna check their, my bill, in charge too.
I'm sure they got it. I'm sure.
We can get a copy.
They're supposed to.
And there's...
Well, they should go out and work till...
There is a mission session.
So maybe, maybe you can't do this motion, I'll wait to see the contract.
We can go ahead and agree to have any of the contracts.
They'll send us the contract.
Right.
We just have to agree to the contract.
We can have, we can have the contract before those concerns, and then he may feel differently than I would, or whenever, but I would trust yours and his.
Yeah, before I sign the contract, I got a question, I think it's... Motion was to approve their bid.
Right.
If he wants a signed contract.
No, I'm fine with it, it's not a problem.
Okay. And then let's go ahead with the motion.
Okay, moved and supported. Any discussion on that? Have a roll call vote, please.
Okay, Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Pat, yes. Bill?
Aye.
And Colin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item H, resolution 2019-08 Comcast franchise agreement. Been kinda busy trying to get this thing ironed out. It's kind of a goofy deal, because the township has zero... It's kind of a goofy deal, because the township has zero, Comcast can do just what they want to do. And there's no way you can make them do anything else. But our agreement was, franchise agreement was twenty years long, runs out in April this year. They sent us a letter saying they wanted a renewal, that they knew the language in the agreement was basically null and void. But they wanted renewed in case the state puts the language back. So it laid there for three years, almost. So back in December, I wanted to get a hold of them, and then finally, we finally got the stuff a couple weeks ago. So, we get the franchise fee will be the same as it currently is, which is five percent. There's also a peg fee for Channel Six. And we kinda gave the short end of the stick on that one, but there's not much we can do about it. So we applied, if you notice the document, you can go up to two percent. So we applied for one percent to cover our peg fees, because Channel Six has been losing money over here. And we'd like to cover that as much as possible. So, if we approve it, then it's up to Comcast, they can approve it, or they can bounce it. It's up to them. But if you don't try, you're not gonna know. The unfortunate thing is, we can't make them do what's in the agreement. So if you want Comcast, they can charge you whatever they want to run it to your house. The agreement said if you had X amount of houses on a mile, they'd run it.
Right.
They don't have to do that, you can't make them. So if they wanna run it a half mile, they want like thirty thousand dollars, they want all the people to pay for it. There's nothing I can do about it. So, and people still want it, because they're in it, basically. So, and we don't make any money, disagreements for the TV coverage. And that's probably gonna be going down anyway, because everybody's, if it wasn't for the internet, you know, Comcast, they'd be talking different. But the internet keeps it going.
Right.
So, we need to get this in. Does anybody have any questions?
I do.
Sure.
Um, the gross revenue, have we ever audited them? We get a considerable amount of money from them actually, don't we?
Yes.
Yeah, they say yes, good money. So as much as I don't like the way they operate, I like their money. There's language in there that theoretically, see, we can't even get Comcast to tell us how many subscribers they have. They will, that's a top trade secret. They will not tell you how many subscribers are in the township.
We have a Facebook page.
Huh?
We have a Facebook page, we talk about internet service out there.
I know, but they did give us a thing of how much money is generated in all the communities in the consortium.
Someone, someone in the community does say we can ask them, they won't give it to us, but we can ask them in a formal request, and I believe they have to, I'm not sure.
I don't think they have to do anything.
They asked it them.
And they don't.
But if you wanna go, it would cost you, you know, if you were gonna audit Comcast, it would cost you some serious money, I would think.
Are we getting, do we have any idea how they compute what they're giving us? I mean, I know what it says they're supposed to do, but, um...
Not unless you did an audit to prove how much revenue they're bringing in to give us our five percent. Now you can look at an individual's bill, and then we'll say franchise fee of the bill, and the percentage. But to say overall, near as I can figure from the data they give, which is sketchy, there's like nine hundred, between nine hundred and a thousand subscribers in Casco. Okay. And that's about all I could gather.
Apparently, the gross revenue, which is, we're supposed to get five percent, goes beyond just what the subscriber fees are, it appears.
I don't think so.
Any considerations of any kind, including without limitation cash credits, property, an in-kind contribution received from, by the provider from subscribers for the provision of video services? And also, I believe it says that all charges and fees paid by subscribers for the provision of video services, including equipment, rental fees, insufficient fund fees. Sold individually in a package deal, just for the video part of it.
Well, you have a TV, okay, and you have Comcast TV. Could be a package, could be individual. Well, you have a box on your TV, that's ten bucks a month, that goes in with the TV. Those are the things that, that are part of the TV package, and that's what you're paying them by percent.
Also, are revenue derived from compensation agreements for advertising to the local franchiserian? Any advertising commissions paid to an affiliate? Do we, do we know if we get any of that? Or if it's even significant, I don't know.
Well, they, the one time, a few years ago, they said there was like two channels that generated money for that. But, I don't know. But, they do pay good, we get, uh...
It might not be good to rock the boat, but, I just, you know...
If I could make them run cable down every road, I'd rock the boat.
Yeah.
But I can't.
Cover the whole township.
You're good at that.
So they give us about forty-four thousand dollars a year for franchise fees, which is really nice.
Yeah, it's a lot of money.
So, I mean, I don't, I don't mind poking them, but I don't wanna gore them.
Well, just asking the question might generate them looking at what they're really doing, and deciding if they don't wanna audit them.
So we'll see if they're gonna approve our one percent versus point six eight percent for peg, which is Channel Six. If they do, they do, and we can still ask them for an audit, make them laugh.
Yeah, I think we have to pay for that.
Oh, yeah.
So that's kinda...
That might be very costly, depending on the cooperative.
That's a good charity, we need to come on, that charity.
Well, I know it wouldn't be a forensic audit, it'd just be a land audit, but, you know, I'm sure that all the documents they have, whether it's electronic or paper, you know...
They changed their billing system last April, they have nothing, trust us. Although that was DTE.
So, you know, they're big enough, and they, they don't care a lick. They make so much money, they don't care. Or they would be running cable to every house in the township.
Right.
Because it would pay for itself in a matter of a year or two, but...
Yeah, a hundred bucks, a hundred bucks a month, months basically minimum.
You know, four hundred feet, they want, you know, five thousand dollars. They don't care.
But their service has improved, and it's good.
Well, that's why their internet lives, because...
They made a sea change a couple years ago, it got really good.
You know, you don't have much option, that's why the internet's what's holding them up. TVs fade now, between Netflix and all this other stuff, you know, I'm sure their TV's down, so... But you get the package plan for the phone and everything, and it keeps it alive, which is good, because that's where we get our money, from the TV. So, we got our money off everything, we'd really be good, but, you know...
Why can't we get revenue from phone service?
You know, the franchises that run service to the area, and I don't think they would pay it.
It's just, uh, because phone is more needed than TV, right?
Yeah, but land people don't have...
Don't have landlines.
Have landlines anymore.
No, we've got Comcast voice.
But back when this started, it was...
So do I, but a lot of people don't.
As long as we have power, or we have internet.
Do you have a cell phone, so, anybody have cell phones for Comcast?
I don't use that.
Very, very cheap.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good deal. I just like your voice lines. I'd just like to have a internet at my house.
I agree.
They don't have it here, they don't have it here also, they got it online though.
I keep getting little cards in the mail about Comcast's business.
Yeah, they have been for the last couple of years.
For a hundred thousand dollars, I'm sure they'll send it to you.
Yes, indeed. But, you know, I just thought it was a federal government position that rural communities would be covered by, by, for internet service. And, you know, I would be hoping that they're pushing from the federal end to get some of this going.
I think they might have covered that with that HughesNet though.
What's that?
The HughesNet is, I think, is what's covered that. So they, like, if you're out in the middle of nowhere, and you want internet, get a satellite there.
Yeah, well, I am a...
Get a tier seven. I know, I know people that have had that, and it's, it's, it's no faster than dial-up.
No, oh, no, I know, no.
No, the neighbor down here got it.
You got a better one?
It's not a necessity, but it certainly would bring me into the twenty-first century.
When this agreement was first put in place, it was made with Heron Cable. I don't know if you guys remember Heron Cable.
We do, because I've worked at it.
I liked Heron Cable, they were very friendly folks.
They had a place right in New Haven too, didn't they, before it was Comcast?
And then Adelphia bought it.
Right.
Because I had a deal with Heron, and just when we were ready to sign the deal, Adelphia bought it, and says, we don't do deals. Get out of here. So I had the short end of that. Well then, Comcast bought out Adelphia. So when this was first put in, which was in ninety-nine, it was only for TV, that's all they had. And so we're renewing an existing, well, apparently, we have no leverage over the other things they can offer on their franchise. So, 'cause I'm sure everybody would stand in line and do it if they could do it. So this is, the original one was for twenty years, this one's for ten years.
Oh, only ten?
Yep. So, but in ten years, they may not have TV service at all, you never know. Things change fast.
Yep.
I think, there was a bite in one of the information newsletters, included with the agenda, about a state initiative to provide a whole rural, and everywhere in the state, internet service.
Right.
Broadband.
Yeah, she's been waiting for it.
Talking about it for two years.
For the state.
Broadband, not wireless. Broadband, not wireless.
No, not wireless, broadband, internet service.
Well, Washington started that a few years ago. And what they did was, and they did it here, a guy called, we have a cell tower over here, and it already has five locators on it. So it's pretty much, so the company calls, they wanna be a locator, be the next locator, and they're going, you know, way down by the ground, because the top is all foam. And the federal government was paying a hundred percent of the bill to get broadband out. Well, the damn thing probably wouldn't go two miles on its best day, and the guy didn't care, he said, I'm getting paid a hundred percent. He could put up thirty-five over it, and they did that all over. And it was just a hundred percent waste of money. And I don't even know if it's still in operation, because they just closed the one over here on this tower. Then the guy got Hughes, and said, that thing's terrible, something was getting. So, you know, we do have maybe a quarter of the people in Casco that Frontier is good. But the rest, the wires are so old that you can't get fast service for the internet.
Yeah, I got Frontier, it's fine.
But there's a guy down here that's had it, uses the internet every day, and he said the speed's right there with Comcast. But when I called to my house, they said, oh, you can't get it, you wanna get on the list, I said, no, it's okay. So, what are you gonna do? So anyway, back to the franchise agreement.
I make a motion to approve, adopt a resolution, I always do that, adopt resolution two thousand nineteen oh eight for the Comcast franchise agreement.
Okay, move in support of it.
Oh, Colin?
With that resolution, two thousand nineteen oh eight, Comcast franchise agreement. Is there any discussion? Here and now, roll call vote, please.
Uh, Colin?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Pat, yes. Joe?
Yes.
And Dave? Great. Moving on.
Moving on. Item I, communication from our assessor, and then I think Colin gained the thing out too.
Yeah.
Basically, a couple months ago, I did talk with Shelley, and she was hoping, even though she was under contract for this year, if we could look into something. And we discussed several things. And then her communication dated February twentieth, I was out that day, and I didn't see this till last week. So I talked to Shelley today and yesterday at the board review, and she has no problem, she said there's no hurry, because, you know, her contract doesn't start till April one. So she had no problem if we wanna open up, you know, some type of negotiation.
No.
To see what kind of...
I make a motion that we give her what she asked for. I have seen, she's at the lowest end of the spectrum of assessors, and she's one of the best.
And she put us back on the track.
She put us back on the track after.
We fell off the track badly, and she put us back together, so...
Yeah, so she deserves this race.
And what's the dollar amount per parcel now?
I... Fourteen dollars.
Fourteen dollars per parcel, okay.
Casco Township has been holding steady at about eighteen fifty, but we're, we're up to, I'd say nineteen twenty parcels.
I think we were over two thousand last year.
Well, and, yeah, and I mean, this is, this is exponentially how we're growing. And I, I have a story to share with you, because, and I don't think it's absolutely necessary, but, because I know I have your support in this. But, at the end of the season, or getting towards the end of the season, all the assessors, or all the treasurers and deputy treasurers, if they can come, are called up to the county treasurer's office for a briefing on how to go through the final closing. There's more reports every year, it gets a little bit more complicated every year. And so I was up at the county in a room full of treasurers. And Molly Corry, who sent this letter to you, was going through the whole process. I had my packet in my lap about what the assessor has to sign, the roles that have to be signed, this has to be done. I'm going through my checklist, I'm going through my checklist of what needs to be done, this and that, and everything else. And Molly Corry is standing in the top of the room overseeing everything, and she's saying, time and again, you need to make sure that this is done, and you make, you have to make sure that you get with your assessor to make sure that this is done, and that's done, and checked in, and sent to the county, to Denise Cunningham, and to this and that. Unless your assessor is Shelley Baumeister, then you don't have to. I was the only treasurer that walked out of that room that day with everything on my checklist signed and done by Shelley, and then it occurred to me how very, very lucky we are. She has completed the level three assessing, which is rare. There's not many of them in Saint Clair County or Santa Lat County, and we had it. And I think Shelley is, is done discussing this. She is done with negotiations. She is asking for fourteen dollars per parcel, which Patty has made a motion, and I support, and I ask your support for this.
Absolutely.
To begin the fiscal year at fourteen dollars per parcel, with a big vote of gratitude towards this assessor that keeps us right where we should be. We have, a township assessor has the month of March to settle with the county and the school districts, because at the end of March, the school districts and the county have to settle with the state. I used to settle at about March the fifteenth, and of course, part of that was just working down the numbers and, you know, doing the reports and making sure that I balanced to the penny on every account. And then I would go up and take my books about the fifteenth. This year, Casco Township was settled on the fifth of March.
I have a question. You said a level three assessor.
A level three assessor.
What does that mean?
That, that is someone, she has expertise in, in...
I think it's somewhat based on the size of the population and the, or the.
And the, and the buildings.
The value of the township.
Value of the township.
Or the value of municipality.
And she deals with DAs and TIPAs and all of that, she has a broad range, most of which we do not utilize, we don't have.
We required a level two probably, but she can do stuff that you don't even see.
And she has spent the last two or three years getting those accreditations. And so she is well worth the money, and.
I got the book, it's really tough. She, she must be very.
It goes to level four, but the level you're at tells you how many millions you can handle. And I think level three is up to ten million, I believe. I think Paul Vincent had ten, had a level three at one time.
Yeah, but he lost his certification.
Well, he was gassed.
I won't do any, I won't say any bad words, but it really put us in a lot of trouble.
It did.
Shelley was, and fixed it, I mean, she really did us a lot of stuff.
And so.
He was a good assessor.
Right.
But he wasn't certified at the end, so it cost us a lot.
Miss Houston gave him a straight now.
So who supported Patty's motion?
I did. Fourteen dollars per parcel.
What is it right now?
Eleven. About eleven.
For the last eight years, she's not asked for the last.
She got ten percent raise last year.
Oh.
And the average is about, from this fourteen, from what she submitted, fourteen sixty-eight amongst the whole bunch of the townships.
But she chose the communities to give you the numbers to.
And she also wrote an audit for a letter toward, about our staff as well.
Birchville's, she's not getting fourteen at Birchville.
But she's going to get fourteen here, I would hope.
She's got it.
I suspect she could have asked for more, but I think fourteen's good.
I think, you know what? She's good, she's good with fourteen, she just does not want to talk about it anymore.
We didn't talk about it.
And won't talk about it anymore.
I don't think she requires an ultimatum, I mean, we're gonna do it.
Is that it?
No. But for that large an increase, I would like to discuss the, well, generally.
Well, I didn't know there was an issue. I mean, I don't work in the office full time here, so.
I know, I know.
That's unfair of us.
So I appreciate it, I appreciate it. And it's, it's not something that, you know, we don't, we don't talk money really, we don't.
Yeah, I mean.
But fair is fair, and the eleven dollars is after all of her certifications and this and that, and then she brought it up. But she does, she only, I only have her one day in the office. I don't want to spend half of that day discussing possibilities for salaries.
Yeah, but, but like Dan, I.
I know, but that's why.
There's your resistance here, I don't think she, anyone needs to give us an ultimatum.
Yes, we do.
We need the roll call vote.
One more second. So, since she never mentions the number fourteen in her communication.
I mentioned the fourteen.
Can you work with her?
She's my lifeline. I can't do my job without her.
Okay. I just don't like adding things that, at the table, that cost money, that's all.
It was on the agenda, we're not adding it.
For her communication, not for her contract.
Well, did you read it?
I did.
You don't mind, do you? I mean.
No.
This is.
I knew what it was.
I don't know where fourteen came from, she must have told you that. I talked to her this morning, she didn't say anything about that.
But.
So.
What do you propose, Bill?
I don't know, I just don't like adding things that, like contracts, that we love to see them ahead of time. That's all. It's not the amount, I like Shelley, she does a great job.
What you're saying is that the contract that we usually read before, like we did with all these other guys, Comcast and so on, isn't here, and you'd like to see that before we vote on it?
No. Can I speak? May I speak, do I have the board's permissions?
Yeah, sure.
You can speak.
What this all boils down to is one-on-one conversations. That perhaps the board should have been privy to, prefaced to this communication. Because Joe Clear stated, he and Dan knew nothing of this until they sat at the table. And so, instead of one-on-one with the employee, come to the board and say, I think this might be happening. I've had this conversation, what do you think? And I think this could have been avoided.
We never had a serious conversation till today.
Well, you can tell by reading.
We just got this at the end of February anyways.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Just, just end at the end of February.
I understand that, because she was under contract.
And the contract is, is to do in April.
But she's asking for a raise.
Should we do that in, in April, should we get the stuff that you think we should have before us, do it in our April meeting, and have it retroactive to the first of them?
Well, the one that I have contracted with that number fourteen in it, and Shelley hasn't seen it, because it doesn't exist.
Maybe we should look at it for the April meeting, and we could always do it retroactively to the, you know, to the first.
I have a motion on the table, and I want it approved.
So it's been approved, and.
Has a vote again.
I haven't done all that.
Okay, do what you gotta do. Okay, roll call vote, please.
We can bring the contract back to you, I'll let you see it.
And it will be for fourteen dollars per parcel, and when we get the parcel count for this year.
This would be like me coming to you and asking you, I've done that before, Dan, you remember?
I, I haven't found any money or anything, I, I was just trying to address Bill's concern, and I think it's kind of legitimate that it is a surprise, I didn't know anything about it. I don't know where the fourteen dollars came from, I don't have a problem with it, I vote for this, for her raise.
I think you have to go back to the contract.
But it's sort of protocol with, you know, the way you do things with contracts, and I think Bill has one, that's all. And he does a great job with this kind of stuff, so.
And, and he does, and he's, he's very good at negotiating a lot of things. But the point has come, where I believe Shelley has mentioned a fourteen dollar before. I believe that Shelley is now uncomfortable with conversations about this, when she has expressed what she needs to, to us, not to you, she's not coming to you.
Has she said she was looking elsewhere?
Oh, no, no, she's very happy here, she's very happy. She has, she has one of the best deputy, or assistants in Linda Team that does a, a lot of prep work for her. We make it, we make it very pleasant, I hope. If you look at the board of review, we have fewer people at the board review year after year, less than. The ones that are coming are, they're always here.
Would, I mean, would it be that big of an inconvenience if we did, just delay it one month?
It would be, it would.
It would not involve any loss of income for her whatsoever.
No, it wouldn't, but it would be a vote of confidence. It would be a vote of confidence that we are asking for from her.
Put it this way, Shelley came to me with the letter, had me read it, I looked at the pay scale, and I asked her, would fourteen dollars make you happy? And she told me, yes, fourteen dollars would make me happy. That is where the fourteen dollars came from.
I don't have a problem with that, but I think Bill has a problem with how you do these things at a point, you're right, Bill? Maybe you should style that. That's a procedure.
First time I heard fourteen dollars was tonight.
Can I speak again?
Hang on, please. So, if that was the case, you know, we should have drawn up the contract for those numbers in it. And had Shelley give her tentative approval, put it on the agenda, and we'll read it before the meeting, then vote on it at the meeting.
What would be the problem doing that?
There's no problem financially, because I think our meeting in April is before the first pay period, but, you know, maybe they, maybe they think that.
But would Shelley take offense at that?
Shelley does not want to talk about this anymore. She does not want her office, anyone sitting down in her office for half a day anymore. I think, I think that she is feeling slightly uncomfortable.
You sat in her office for half a day.
You do.
Not over the paycheck. We mentioned it a couple of months ago, and I mentioned it because I got this last night and this morning.
She feels different.
We hadn't talked in between. So, and she never said that, she wanted a certain number, or I could have said yes or no, or I'll take it to the board. Because of the legality. I would never say no, but I can't say yes, because I haven't had that authority.
So.
So let's vote, let's move in this part, roll call vote, please.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
With, with reservations.
Uh, yes, I copied Dan's.
With reservations.
No, you don't have to.
Oh, okay.
In the minutes, yes, but, you know.
Oh, in the minutes.
Yeah, I think we should have followed the normal, like you did with everything else on the table tonight, it's painful, but you do, you know.
What, come back with a complete contract and vote on a contract?
That's what we've always done with the assessor before, and I don't see how Shelley should take any offense at the board doing what it does with every other contract that we review. I, you know, we don't even, we don't give Bill a hard time, we don't give you a hard time, it's just something the way we have done this, it's, also, it's for the public record as well.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that's, that's my biggest concern, is we're approving an amount for a contract that is not part of the public record, it's not part of the meeting minutes or anything.
The contract that comes back to you will say exactly what we just said here.
Well, I just probably did not know there was an issue, that's.
There isn't an issue, it's badly, it's her feelings, she's, has her feelings about something, but this is something that.
You need to tell them.
You know, it's a professional thing, it's not a matter of, we're not.
She's just feeling uncomfortable. She's stated to us what she would like, and it's reviewable after a year, I mean, this is not a, you know, five-year contract. I would just like to put her mind at ease, that there will be no more haggling, haggling is the word.
Who's gonna haggle, I don't get this.
Yeah, negotiating with her.
Because you don't work in our office, you don't understand what both sides.
I can tell you.
What?
And with all respect, last year when the contract came up, she asked for, I don't know if she asked for one percent. But whatever she asked for, one percent was all that she was gonna get.
Ten percent.
Ten percent, whatever it was. Because, and I love Bill, I respect him, he is a wonderful person, but he badgers her. Now, that may not be his intention, and that may not be how he thinks she is taking it. It could be a total breakdown in communication, but I can tell you unequivocally, that is how she is feeling. She doesn't want to discuss her pay one-on-one with Bill. And she respects him, and he respects her, but I don't even get into the crux of the matter. Nobody wants to hurt anybody's feeling, and I don't want to hurt his feelings, and I don't want to lose his respect. But this is, if I am, stand corrected ladies, correct me if I'm wrong. Nope. It's a total breakdown in communication. Shelley doesn't want to say, Bill, I'm, you're intimidating me. But that is, that is how she is feeling, and I know Bill doesn't mean to do that, but that is what has been the end result. And that's why Colleen is saying, she doesn't want to discuss this anymore. Next contract, contract after that. If, I think if Bill has an idea, he should bring it to the board and say, what do you all think, before I talk to her? Start where the majority is. And that's why, that's where we're at, and I apologize if I've overstepped, but.
Well, you help clarify it.
Well, I need, I see the confusion on your face, and Bill doesn't know what's going on, and we kind of do, and nobody wants to, and I don't operate that way. I want us all to understand and be on the same page. So I don't know if you would do this with reservation, because I think last year when that contract was signed, she would have probably asked for fourteen dollars. But she didn't feel like she could.
Well, that's not technically accurate.
Well, and if I stand corrected, I apologize.
I'm pretty vocal with this, but I wish Shelley had taken that up directly with Bill, or with you guys in the office, and that it didn't end up in the board, on the board this way.
Yeah.
And I'd like to add also that I watched Bill badger the, badger the folks, folks at the road commission the other day, and he did. But it was all on behalf of the township.
Right.
He's always done, and he badgers everybody, including some of us sometimes, to try to drive the costs for this township down. I cannot but long for that, and I don't know what the problem is with him and Shelley, but they should figure that out themselves.
So.
You know, we should, I don't, I, that's what I suspect, because she doesn't want to talk to you about it, but she should, it's not, it doesn't belong here.
They'll work it out.
You know, the contract belongs here, you know, you need to prove it.
All right, we'll finish the roll call vote.
That's all.
Pat, yes, Bill?
I vote no.
Okay, no. And Colleen?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on, paying the bills.
All right, you're up.
Okay, I make a motion to pay the bills, I'll commit it.
I'll support that.
Move in supportive, pay the bills. Is there any discussion? Ever, roll call vote, please.
All right, Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Hi.
Pat, yes. Joe?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on. Citizens comments, anybody in attendance who would like to address the board with questions or concerns? Now is your opportunity, we'd like to get your name, but it's not necessary if you don't want to, go ahead. Here we are. Pretty quiet out there.
We went through them all, pretty much, I mean, that last one was a little bit confusing, but I think everybody, I mean, I, I get it, if she wants more money, that's fine, I, I don't, I don't have a problem paying a little bit extra for somebody who's obviously overqualified, not an issue.
Yeah.
I, I do agree with you, like, wanting to see the contract first, and not, you know, I mean, if.
That should have been on the table, that should have been on the agenda, approve the contract for the assessor.
I mean, I don't think anybody's gonna have an issue paying a little bit more money for somebody who's obviously more qualified than what we need.
We don't want to lose her, she does a great job.
But, and she, and I get it, if she doesn't want to talk about it, she's like, I, who, who came up with the fourteen dollars?
It's not fair that.
I mean, just.
Two of us are totally on the loop, we have no clue what's going on, how could we make?
Well, I know.
We shouldn't have to know about what's going on.
Contract should have been in the, in the.
Yeah, and they should resolve their issues and.
That won't be any different than what we have set here. We just wanted a vote of confidence.
All right, see you then.
You got it.
That's it, it's a vote of confidence for our assessor.
I got a more exciting question, there's this note in the update about the seventy-two marijuana plants, caregiver facility.
Oh.
Yeah.
I got a question.
How did we?
I mean, apparently some neighbor has concern about it. Don't they have to have it all enclosed, or not, can't be seen from the street?
Right.
It has to be padlocked, so I'm not sure, unless that's changed. You gotta really do it right if you're gonna, not in trouble.
I mean, you can do, you can also do the twelve plants if you want today.
Yeah, but you have to have them enclosed, or.
Not the twelve though.
Are you sure, if that was the way it was, it's changed?
Well, one's medical, one's recreational. Well, it's medical ones, recreation.
I think everything, yeah, everything's changed when it went, when it went recreational. For law, like law wise, as that we deal with, it's changed.
Those strong medical requirements. I mean, you know, have a lock, you know, that kind of stuff.
I think over, over a certain, over a certain percentage, I believe, you have to have it secured. But if it's just for personal use, I'm pretty sure you can grow a few plants in your backyard.
With your vegetables.
Right. You could have, I could have a model vegetable garden. I, well, I personally can't.
I think that's logical, actually. I just remember how tough it was before.
Yeah. Well, that was because it was still illegal. When it was under medical purposes, it was still illegal for everybody, anybody else to grow it. Now. Yeah, it's.
Well, it's a federal government.
Right. So, like, as a, as a, as a citizen and a resident of Michigan, personally, you can grow it and smoke it yourself. Not an issue. For me, like, I work for the federal government. I cannot grow it because it violates my policies and my contract.
No.
So I can't grow it. I can't smoke it. My wife can smoke it all she wants, but it can't be on my property.
Yeah, well.
Anyway, the snag was the 72.
So she can go next door and go, yeah.
Right.
That's the next question, like electricity.
Normally.
Right. I mean, he could grow it, he could grow that whole back field and sell it recreationally, and it doesn't affect me. But if I grow any plants on my property, now I could get fired from my job because of my contract.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Yeah, those rules, the rules are.
Yeah.
The thing with the 72, I bought a house in Polbon. He wants to bring in a 72-plant medical. Well, we have a policy on accessory buildings, which Polbon is, that your electric service can't exceed 200 amps. Because the odds are if it does, you're doing something you're not supposed to be doing. So this, so I don't have a problem with the 72 plants, but he wants 600-amp service. So we're tangling over that. Probably he's gonna win from checking it out thoroughly. Because there's really no way to keep them out. I just don't want the big electricity thing going in.
Don't some jurisdictions flat deny?
The courts have beat them all.
The only, the only thing I think we can stop is, you could stop a business.
Businesses we can stop.
Personally, if he's doing it within the confines of the law.
But if our law says 200 amps, then he's.
Well, it's our regulation, but I don't think you can, that'll stop them if it's an illegal enterprise.
Right, because he's doing it legally. He's paying the bill for it.
Right. But we're seeing, now, I talked to a guy that did have a 72-plant, and he just quit. Says he wasn't making any money. He said they're supposed to be phased out by 2021. So why this guy wants to set all this stuff up for two years is kind of fishy. Plus, I think he could do 72 plants with 200 amps if he had state-of-the-art equipment.
He could also be attempting to try and do it as a business afterwards of selling it recreationally.
We've already opted out of it.
I know, but he might not do it that way.
Well, he's gonna do something he's not supposed to.
I mean, if it's gonna phase out, and there's, I know guys that do grow it medically, and there's, the money is disappearing from it because you can grow it yourself.
Right.
At home without any.
I know. That's why partially why I'm giving him a little bit of trouble because it didn't seem logical. He'd want to move that in at this point in time if it's something that exists for two years.
But if he's gonna become a distributor under the table.
Yeah.
That's a lot more, I mean, that's the same as operating a still in my backyard. You're gonna make a lot more money if you do it shady.
But you've parked something you don't have to do that with. Anybody can grow it now.
Well, you grow 12.
Right, but if I grow, if I grow 72 plants and I'm taking all the responsibility for growing them and I'm just selling it to you, it's cheaper for you to buy it from me than it is for you to go buy the plant, maintain them, feed them, water them, make sure they have adequate light.
Right. How much are you smoking?
No, their people smoke a lot.
Be surprised. I mean, I grew up.
I know guys that.
In Anar. Yes, yes. Thank you. Colleen's in the.
It's all about money nowadays.
So I don't know. We're, we'll see.
Interesting.
You know, if I can't prevent it, then he's good. That's all. I don't mind him coming in there if it's legal. I just didn't want heavy electric service.
This thing from Foster says, you know, if there's two caregivers in the building, you got 44 plants out there maybe.
No, you only get, you only get, what is it, six?
Six per person, I think.
Six per.
It says.
Six people?
So you could have 12.
Six, well, six plants per person, and you can only allow certain people, or seven plants, something like that.
If you're a 72-plant caregiver, you can have 12 patients.
Yeah.
Yes. But if you had two caregivers in the building.
Yeah. And we ran into that a little bit last year because all the communities put an ordinance in about home occupation for the medical one, and all of a sudden, the court threw it out. So no more home occupation. That, you can't keep them home. So I was gonna throw an ordinance in saying only one caregiver per parcel. Well, that's when they're coming up with the recreational one. Well, if I set a public hearing for anything with word marijuana, you know, we're gonna have about 500 people here. And it has nothing to do with recreational. So we didn't do a damn thing. I said, you know, with the law as the law is, we're probably not gonna stop anyway. And, well, we did opt out of all commercial activity under recreational. The only thing you can do under recreational is grow 12 plants. You can grow it, you can smoke it, you can give it away, but you can't sell it.
Right.
But I can sell you a T-shirt for $100.
That comes with an ounce.
Yeah. So that's the way it is going. So that's what we're saying.
As long as there's not a storefront on the corner. Thank you.
So, you know, they've been fighting with the medical one for 10 years, and it's still all moved up. So I figured it's probably gonna take them 10 years to get the other one halfway straightened out. And that's why we opted out. Because, you know, you can't be the pace setter with our resources and without the resource.
And no one or no.
Right. And all the growers I talked to, they said that they would not even contemplate doing the recreational growing without city water. Okay. But we'll see. But, you know, that's 500,000, 1,500,000. And I have a guy that looked into it from another township, and he said, the growers, he must have, he went to Colorado. He said, the growers stink worse than the landfill. If you live close by, it's gonna get you. It'll drive you crazy. It stinks so bad. That's all I know. So, I don't tell.
Yeah, the green stuff smells worse than the smoker's stuff. I mean, it really smells strong.
Well, and that's not even an issue. The total issue, you know, the drug cartels are gonna move in. This is, this is gonna happen.
Pardon me? Drug cartels?
Yep.
Oh, come on.
They're buying huge slots of property out in Colorado and Washington. But our, our grow, the issue here is our growing season's not the, it's not, it's not conducive here. I deal with this stuff on a daily basis, and it's not, we are not in a prime corridor for anything.
Like Florida or Hawaii.
I mean, there, there are drugs that come in from Canada, but it's not.
Actually, Canada's trying to corner the international market.
They are.
They have huge greenhouseers up there.
They're doing more crop per year.
Yeah, greenhouses.
I mean, that's what, that's what these people are talking about. We're talking backyard garden. We're talking greenhouse.
They're actually looking at the international.
Electricity.
Yeah.
Anyway, after these years, 70% of the communities in Colorado have opted out of the business. So it tells you that, you know, money is money, but there's a cost involved also. So they don't want to get involved. They're getting out of it. So it's a crazy world. But that's what we get.
But a resident of Casco can legally grow 12-personal marijuana.
I can give you the plant for 15 bucks each.
Buy the seeds and put them in the ground.
Bill's got it.
Neighbor, now the neighbor lives on the other end. I saw him.
That's right. That's what they call it, cash.
How much are the seeds?
Give you the plants for 15 bucks.
It all depends on the strain. It all depends on.
On the what?
Yeah.
The strain.
They got so many hybrids.
They got all different kinds.
Oh, don't encourage these people. Everybody's sidewalks will be lined with beautiful plants, right?
Obviously, attitudes have changed. It's so obvious that attitudes have changed.
They have to grow in the ditches.
Okay. If nobody else.
And then we'll burn it. It's a murder fest.
I made a motion to adjourn.
Burn it now.
We'll just party to adjourn. All else in favor, stand adjourned.